Okay, I'm going to call this meeting of the Squim City Council to order. Our first item is the statement of coexistence and government-to-government relationship. The city that we know as Su Chi Queen Ying was once inhabited solely by first peoples known as the New Sky EM people represented by three tribal governments, Janetown Scollum, Port Gamble Scollum, and Lower Elawa Clallum. Of these three sister tribes, the Janetown Scollum tribe takes the lead in relationships with the city of Squim while including the two sister tribes as determined by the tribes. We, the Squim City Council, and our partner, the Janetown Scollum tribe, value coexisting respectfully and responsibly together for the purpose of stewarding the people, lands, and the institutions that serve us. Our governments do not work alone in isolation, but care for each other's communities. With enlightened awareness of the local history of this area, we commit to a continued partnership and collaboration as two sovereigns. This statement of coexistence and government-to-government relationship is a respect to the Cloud Scollum people and their history, and today is also an acknowledgement of Indigenous Peoples Anything from council? All right, item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
And if the city clerk could please take roll call.
Counselor Kathy Downer.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe. Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
Item four, approval of the final agenda. Is there any changes to the final agenda? Would like to-
Move to approve final agenda as proposed, as presented.
And I will second that.
I did have one change I would like to make, sorry.
Sorry, I'll hold off.
Just because it's towards the end of the agenda and it's kind of full, I would like to move 11A to after number five, just because they have school tomorrow.
Having made that motion, I'm quite happy to make that substitution, so.
I second that.
Any objections? All right, CNM, 11A is moved to the new six. All right, number five ceremonial, deputy mayor.
All right, I will be reading the 2024 Life Saving Award. Be it known that Officer Mark Poole has been awarded a 2024 Life Saving Award for his actions that are directly responsible for saving a human life. On Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, at approximately 15:11 hours, officers were dispatched to a report of a man who had climbed over the railing of an overpass and was trying to jump off the bridge. Officer Mark Poole arrived on the scene first and found the male standing on the railing, bent over and looking as though he was going to jump. Officer Poole began a dialogue with the male subject in an effort to help him. Officer Poole was on scene for approximately one and a half minutes when he determined that he had to take action because the male was refusing help and refused to step off the railing. Due to the immediate danger the male posed to himself and the potential danger to operators of vehicles on the highway below, Officer Poole took decisive action and secured the male, effectively preventing him from jumping off the bridge. Once secured, Officer Mark Poole continued conversing with the male with a calm voice in an attempt to help him through his crisis. Officer Poole continued to engage the male with kind conversation until a designated crisis responder arrived and spoke with the male. Just before the male was transported to the hospital, Officer Poole gave the male a final salutation and wished him well. Due to the height of the bridge, the rapidly developing and dynamic situation, the time of day, and the volume of traffic on the highway before it could be stopped, Officer Poole undoubtedly prevented the loss of life to the male and possible injury of others. Officer Mark Poole's actions are directly responsible for saving a human life. His actions mirror our agency's mission, vision, and values and warrant recognition in accordance with Squim Police Department Policy 1030.4 for a job well done.
Well, well done, better than I can read, and I'll embarrass myself now, but to give Mark a little bit of my personal thanks, I think calm, cool, collected is a cliche that's often overused, but that's literally how Mark operates day to day, and probably the reason why he would be able to show up on scene, start a dialogue, a little follow-up to that, is because we do have a designated crisis responder through Peninsula of Behavior Health embedded with our department, we're able to do follow-up services and make sure that the individual got some more appropriate help that he needed. And a little bit about Mark is since Chief Sherry Crane has retired, he is now our longest-serving active officer, who began his career in 1995. I was in high school. But during his career, Mark has been named Officer of the Year and most recently Partner of the Year, and a Partner of the Year award is voted on by your peers, who they would most like to have on a call with them, and I think Mark's just demeanor and consistency that he's known for is why they wanted him, they would want him there with them, and ultimately, much like he was able to save a life on August 20th. So part of this award is Mark gets, is presented with a plaque of what Rachel just so eloquently read, because we like to remind people that do good in order to keep doing good, and also it is worthy of a life-saving medal and barfers uniform.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Regan Nichols, Superintendent of Squim Schools, and I would like to offer the opportunity for our board president, Eric Pickens, to just introduce himself.
Hi, good evening, Eric Pickens. Just wonderful to be here, and we're excited to talk about some facility options that are coming up. I'm a part of the Long Range Facilities Committee, and we've gathered together a group of individuals, and we want to share that information with you. I think it's an exciting time for our, for our community, and we're just really happy that you all have given us this time, so, thank you.
We're joining you tonight because our school district is moving out to ask for community input regarding the future of our facilities, and I'd like to give you the background and let you know our rationale for why we are moving out in the direction that we are right now. We are actually in a 30-day public comment period around our facilities proposals, and then I'd like to be able to give you some information about our building conditions assessment. As we get to that part tonight, I will be turning to our Director of Facilities, Operations, and Security, Mike Santos, who has been with us now for one year. Okay, so he's gotten a deep dive in a short time, but we're going to move on, and I'd like you to know that this plan that you're going to hear more about is simply a proposal. It is in draft form, but we are seeking opinion because we do want a vision for our future that matches what our community has as values. There we go, okay. So what you'll see now is a timeline, and this is the timeline of our process to actually move out on coming up with facilities proposals. Back in March, we put out a stakeholder application that folks in the community could fill out and request that they be considered to be on our Long Range Facilities Planning Group. That group now is about 18 people strong. We have representation from all across our community, including the city of Squim and the county, because our school district does spread across two counties, actually. And we also wanted to be sure we had staff representation on this committee, which we do, but you'll see that the timeline started us with meetings in April, so we've had seven meetings, and we have moved through six months of having our folks learn a lot about our buildings, about the history of our facilities, and making sure that we are prepared to know the facts that are necessary to make quality decisions. So some of that information isn't just about facilities, it's about demography, what type of students are actually going to be in our buildings over the next 30 to 40 years, looking at analysis of voter demographics, how are people making decisions and valuing things here in our community, making sure we understand how our facilities are graded for their ability to be accessible, adequate, making sure they're meeting standards, all those things. So where the gold star is, is where we are now at the phase of public comment, and just for you to know about our team, Director Pickens is actually a member of the team, so I'll let him just give you a moment around what we've been working on and how that's gone.
Yeah, it's, it's been an educational process, I think, for a lot of us, and so a lot of times, the folks that are on the committee, they don't necessarily always know all of the facility challenges that are taking place. There's some folks that are a little more familiar with the high school, some less familiar with elementary schools, and it's important to note that there are folks, there are folks with kids that are on the part of the team, there are folks without kids as a part of the team, and so also folks came into this not knowing necessarily, not having an opinion about what they wanted. In fact, there were some, some folks that are a little skeptical about what the process was. That's why I think it was so important that we really started an educational process from the ground up, knowing what the challenges are, knowing what differences are between the type of facilities we have versus residential facilities, all of those nuances that go into it, and so through that process, we've, we've, we've considered many, many options and, and how we're going to go about providing, providing what our students need essentially, and that's pretty much been the main focus of all of our, all of our conversations. We also talked, we brought in, brought in folks that talked about what the, what the future is going to hold for the Squim School District, what the future projections of students are, are we, are we looking at considerably more students, less students, and so we've really taken a comprehensive approach to really assess all of the needs, so, yeah, and Regan will fill you more in on that.
All right, so let's talk about facilities in Squim School District. This is a historical timeline to show everyone when we've had construction over the past, you know, many, many years, about 100 years, and you'll see that District Office was constructed in 1932, and then we move up to 1967. In the 1950s, a gymnasium was built. It's not the gymnasium that is currently there right now, although that one is aged as well, but we did have one earlier. But I want to focus on Helen Holler Elementary School, built in 1967 initially, additional buildings were built in 1978, the high school, A, B, C, D, and E buildings were built in 1967 as well, and what I'd like to share, am I making that large like that, or? Oh, okay. The buildings are of California campus style, which means that the campus has multiple buildings that are considered one school, and we recognize that different buildings have different needs right now. Transportation had a garage that was built in 1966, that has since been torn down, but instead, the district purchased a lumberyard, and that is where our transportation center now lives, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit, because there are some significant concerns, but moving on, Grayville Elementary in 91, and then the middle school in 1998. I'd like to stop here and pause to say, the last facilities bond for school buildings was passed in 1996. It's been 28 years, long time. So we have this Long Range Facilities Planning Group to determine what is the next phase of school planning that has to happen so that our buildings are, A, as I said, adequate, B, meeting standard, C, modern enough to provide a 21st century education to our students, because we're already 25 years into that century, okay? So when you see the CLT building and you see the central kitchen, those were built from capital levy or grant funds, not from bonds. So current conditions, I think many of you have had the experience, or maybe you've had visitors or relatives who have looked at our school campuses, and I think everyone can recognize that our buildings are aged, but what we would like you to understand are some of the current conditions we have, and so I'm going to invite up Director Santos to give you a brief overview of the primary buildings of our focus, which right now, from the Long Range Facility Planning Group, are Helen Holler Elementary and our high school, A, B, C, D, and E buildings, along with considering some of our traffic issues, you probably have heard about some of those, congestion, and also our transportation center. So Mike.
Thank you Superintendent Nichols. Good evening to the mayor and city council. My name is Mike Santos, I'm the Director of Facilities, Operations, and Security for the district. I'll take you through succinctly as I possibly can, I tend to get in the weeds, so I'll try to stop myself from doing that, but I'll take you through succinctly what is going on with three of our facilities, but I'm going to talk about two of those facilities now, and I'm going to talk about them together because they suffer from the same maladies. So if you think about your school's water, power, sewer, drainage, and how important all four of those critical systems and infrastructure is, we have some major concerns and some major challenges at both Holler and the high school buildings, A, B, C, D, and E. I'll talk about transportation here in a moment. Holler specifically, let's talk about water. Water and power together, they're in the slabs of the building, so they're not run through the walls like they are at your house. They aren't run through the walls like buildings that were even built in the 80s. They're in the slabs, and they're galvanized, in some cases aluminum wiring. In some cases, the conduit's been flooded, and we continue to operate these buildings and patch them as we possibly can, but unfortunately, it's becoming untenable when it comes to those, those two particular systems, excuse me. Sewer-wise, the high school has black pipe or cast in the slabs that runs under all of those buildings and out to the sanitary sewer on Squim Boulevard. We are seeing a significant amount of deterioration in those as well. Signs of those are constant clogging, not caused by a person, but caused by collapse. So we are starting to see some serious failures there as well. And then finally, drainage. Drainage is important because most, Squim doesn't have a stormwater capture system. So our high school and Helen Holler have drywells. Well, those drywells have never been dug up, never been rebuilt, are now plugged up, so when the rain falls and the water comes down the gutters and doesn't spill onto the property, it goes down a couple of downspouts and into drywells that can't take the water. So where's the water go? It ponds, and it freezes, and it partially floods our properties. What's, you might think, well, the water recedes, well, the water has to go somewhere. It's moving under the foundations, and in some cases, under the concrete slabs of our buildings, and it's starting to move the concrete and the foundations around. So that's causing us some significant issues as well. A couple of items I want to come back to real quick, when it comes to especially electrical and electrical infrastructure. We have electrical, for those of you in the audience, distribution switchgear and motor control centers that are dated in the early 70s. We can no longer source parts for them, we can no longer fix them if they catastrophically fail, and if we were to try to replace them, where they're currently located does not meet current code. We would literally have to build a new structure to house a new set of switchgear, but our schools rely on fire protection systems and fire alarms in order to occupy them. If we don't have power, we can't occupy the facility. So these are significant risks that we have. Currently, they're holding together, to be honest, but we're quite sure, and our experts that conducted our building condition index assessments have told us that we are in a period of time that we are going to have to start making some choices, and those choices are predominantly replacement. And for those of you in our community that have not only approached me, but approached the rest of the administration and wonder, well, why don't you just use the bones you got and rebuild those facilities? Superintendent Nichols pointed out that Helen Holler and the high school are both California campuses. Not a bad thing in itself, actually a very, very popular architecture type back in the day that they were built, but that was a very different time, and a very different time for school security. Those campuses are extremely difficult to secure, so we can't electrify the doors for automatic lockdown sets without replacing all the doors and all the frames, and just as a reminder to some of you who grew up in that period, yours truly included, there was typically vermiculite-bearing asbestos that was used to, or used for insulation in the CMU walls, in the concrete walls, concrete masonry unit, the concrete block walls. So every time we get into a construction project, excuse me, it's kind of, it snowballs, so remediation costs are incredibly expensive, so to consider full renovation of buildings like A, B, C, D, and E, and Helen Holler, would be somewhere near 1.5 to 1.8 times the cost of scraping the school and building a new one someplace, okay? So now I'll move on to transportation. Transportation is, the superintendent mentioned, part of it was built in the 60s. That building was red-tagged, it was actually on the high school property, and they bought the lumberyard. The lumberyard was also built in the late 70, or excuse me, 60s. It is, the barns themselves, where the buses reside, if you will, some reside outside, but some reside inside these old lumber barns, are wood in construction, and they are that old. So here in the Pacific Northwest, we know, we know what happens to wood over a period of time in this climate, it starts to rot, we start having structural issues. The roof is corrugated metal sheet. Every time the wind comes up, we wind up missing five or six of those, and we don't have a shelter anymore at that point. They're very expensive to maintain, they're, there's, quite frankly, they're at end of life. The building itself, it's kind of a hodgepodge of construction, part of it in the 60s, part of it in the mid 70s, also containing CMU, and that service bay that we're currently using is incredibly difficult to use as a service bay for buses. Doesn't have a lift, it won't support a lift. It doesn't have a pit, a service pit, we can't dig a service pit there, and that part of the building itself is starting to shift dramatically due to water infiltration under the slab of the building to the south, moving north. So the building is beginning to be structurally compromised. We could affect some emergency measures if we were to have to keep this building long-term, but it would be in somewhere between the quarter million and $400,000 range. We're not sure if the property is even worth that, to be quite honest. So we've got some serious concerns at transportation, not only the facility itself, but the way its usage, and finally, I'll leave you with this, over the coming years, in the next three to four, five years, the state is mandating that the school districts move to electric The PUD has informed us that this property that we have today, transportation, cannot be supplied with enough power to support a fleet of electric buses. Furthermore, I think this would probably make sense to all of you, I don't think many of us would feel comfortable plugging a bus in in a leaky building. So those are, that's kind of a brief synopsis of our challenges here at the district, and finally, I'll tell you, in a, in a state school district that struggles for funding at times, we are spending somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four times the amount of money we should be spending to effect repairs on these facilities, and it is becoming exponentially more difficult to do so. So the bottom line is, the buildings that I've mentioned to you tonight have finally aged out, and they've served the city well for a very long time, and as the superintendent informed you, I've, I've been here just a little bit over a year, but I've been working with buildings of this age for the last 35 years as an asset manager. So I can tell you, based on our experts' opinions, our experts' inspections, and my empirical knowledge and professional knowledge, it's time to replace these facilities. There will come a point where we are faced with a similar situation like we did at the community school, where we come to work one day and we're no longer allowed to occupy the building, and we'll have to scramble to, to put the children in a place where we can affect their education. So I want to thank you very much for your time, thank you.
So Director Santos spoke about building certification and condition assessments, and that's what we just want you to know. We have gone through this process, they are third-party assessors, you're assigned them by the state, they have to be certified by the Office of Public Instruction to come and do so, so we've been through that process just in the last year. You can see on the bottom of this slide that there is a rubric for how the buildings are scored, and you'll notice at the top that it delineates between recognized and unrecognized space. Recognized space in the school construction world is around instructional use, educational space. Non-recognized buildings are non-instructional space or portables. The problem is that about 20% of instructional space in Squim School District are on portables. So we have a situation where we have non-recognized buildings that the state formula will not be recognizing for additional funding, yet we have to focus on them. Next, we're going to look at the scores that our school system has received from these third-party assessors, and I want you to look for green and yellow, green and yellow. Not there. Okay, we're going to- Okay, we're going to come right to the place here soon where we show you the recommendations from our Long Range Facilities Planning Group. You'll see that there are priority needs in every one of the proposals. None of what you will see from the Long Range Facilities Planning Group is a wish list. It's about these needs because of these scores. But the red scores on Helen Holler Elementary as poor and Squim High School, ABCD and E as poor, will be what are the priorities coming up. So in Washington State, there is a program. It's called the School Construction Assistance Program. And it offers some funding to school districts to replace or have major renovation to their school buildings. The issue becomes that you have to qualify for that money. And Squim School District qualifies in one of those sectors, but not in both. You can qualify by the age of your buildings and you can qualify by having enrollment eligibility because you're growing so large with your enrollment that you have to do something fast. We don't have that issue right now. What we have is age, but 30 years is the magic number in order to qualify. And so you saw the buildings of 1967 and 78. So the age eligibility is there, except that ABCD and E buildings were able to have a major energy renovation in 2000. And that reset the SCAP clock. Okay? So we'll keep going here. You all probably know that levies in the school world are for learning. So our school system has two types of levies. We have a program levy called an EP and O levy, educational programming. That is coming due. And we will be moving forward to have the board consider how they decide to run a levy for the program side. We also have a capital levy that is active. And we have that running out in 2025. And we have a sheet we'll leave with you that shows all the progress that's been made around that capital levy. Bonds are for building. And we are coming forth with proposals regarding possible bond options. But it takes 60% approval to pass a bond for school construction. And that has been a challenge for Squim School District for many, many years or decades. This is information about our attempted bonds. You'll see the gray bars. The gray bars are bond attempts here in Squim back in 2014, 2015, and on. Those did not pass. And we know that it's going to be a challenging road to make sure everyone has the information they need to make an informed decision about what comes next. I would also point out that the bonds that passed, failed, excuse me, did come close to getting the 60% support. We have 57, 59, 57. But we know that we have to be sure people have the understanding of the need. Our program levies and our capital levies are successful in Squim School District. And we hope that people see that what is happening in the schools right now is worth continuing to support because we certainly are trying to give all that we have to those efforts, including the capital levy. We also would like you to know that Squim School District is 236th out of 295 school districts in the state of Washington for the degree of school taxation that our community requests. That level is quite low. And we recognize that people want us to be very much cautious and thoughtful about what we are asking for. I think that you'll find the Long Range Facilities Planning Group did exactly that. But we do recognize the challenge we have being 236th in the state. So here are our draft recommendations. There are three options. These options are just that, proposals right now in front of the community. The first option prioritizes Helen Holler Elementary being replaced along with high school buildings, ABCD and E, and puts a bus pathway through the campus so that we can ease congestion in both the parking lots of the schools and on the roadways. You'll see that this total project is estimated at $119,274,000. And then it outlines SCAP funding. That's that school construction assistance funding from the state to offset. Helen Holler Elementary school buildings are eligible for that at $5,200,000. So that brings the bond amount to $114,074,000. And for a 20-year bond term, it would be approximately 71 cents per thousand. Option two, same package as option one, but what it's adding is a recommendation about multi-sport athletic facility, upgrading our facilities because we recognize a few things. Number one, we recognize that Realtors have communicated to us that professionals that are moving in to be service providers to our community of all kinds are a challenge to have come here and stay. And when they come and they're considering it, if they have families, they want a tour of the school facilities. They take a tour and they have questions about two things. The school buildings, will my children receive the education that they need in that building? And then secondly, around athletics. Because many of these families expect that the athletic opportunities are going to be great for their children. And they want to be sure on the peninsula, we can offer that. The facilities are part of that package. We also have received information and requests for two meetings this summer with Olympic League referees for soccer. They were considering not sending referees to our field at the high school to continue to have games because they were worried about the quality of the field and danger with the safety. We did have it professionally assessed. And we were able to Band-Aid the situation, really pump the water to that field and pass for the season. But we're definitely at risk. We also have many people saying to us, you are the only school district of a few that still have grass fields. Turf is the wave of the future and what most people expect. I also will say this. Our school system, and gladly so, is incredibly supportive of our community athletic use. We are the hotspot for soccer, football, cheering, volleyball. Our gyms are full, they're booked. Our fields are full, they're booked. Go any weekend, we're full of kids and we love it. But we have to be able to provide the space for that to happen. Option three. Option three includes the two packages from option one and two, but it also adds safety and security measures. You heard Director Santos talk about the challenges we have with our California campus style. It's real, that is happening. And we really want to make sure that security vestibules are what are prioritized because research has shown that that is a mechanism for mitigating security issues. Gray Wolf, if any of you have been on Carlsborg Road at dismissal time for Gray Wolf Elementary, you know what I mean. So the bus loop, the parking would be re-engineered to help improve traffic flow. Gray Wolf does not have a cafeteria. It has a gym. The children eat in the classrooms. The gym is what is used for PE throughout the day, of course. So we would be looking for that space so that we can have a communal cafeteria for children. And then the Gray Wolf building, even though it's considered one of our newest schools, it's 33 years old, it's already over the SCAP 30-year mark. And it's in need of some updated HVAC. There's no cooling there. We've got heating that we need to have more standardized. And then it includes the transportation center on option three. We recognize that something is going to have to be done with that center. So you'll see the total there. And for package three, it is coming in at approximately 91 cents per thousand. The Long Range Facilities Planning Group has taken the time to address long-range tax projections. This is available on our website if people would like to look at it more closely because of course, at this size, it's hard to read. But it takes each of those options and looks out into the future. And what I'd like you to note is 2020. 2020 is right here. For any of the bond projection options, you will see that the tax rate does not exceed what was asked of the community in 2020. So there's been absolute consideration about that and the tolerance. Here is a comparison. It's important to know that the capital levy will be falling off as of December 31, 2025. We want to make sure that our stakeholders realize that for each of the approximate amounts for the rate, it will be having that drop off of 42 cents because the capital levy will be complete and a realized increase will be less than the actual approximate amount. So really, we're looking at increases of 29 cents, 35 cents, or 49 cents to current tax levels. The other effect that we are seeing in Squim School District, and we expect it to continue, is that the amount that is asked for at the ballot box always ends up being reduced because we had 63 cents per thousand for our last capital levy. We're now down to 42 cents. And we do believe that with the increased residents that will be built, I know right now, we're looking at 500 to 900 new homes in Squim, that we will share the responsibility across more homes and taxpayers and we'll probably see a projected tax reduction in that way. However, we're only speaking of what is present right now because that's what is a guarantee. So we're here on a community feedback tour. We want everyone to know about this. We want you to know there is a survey that is active right now. We have a QR code here tonight and I will share those items with you if that's allowable. And I can leave some for community members who would like to review these and add their feedback. November 12, our Long Range Facilities Planning Group will receive all that feedback and make a final recommendation to the school board on November 18. And December 2, our school board is expected to make a final decision on a potential facilities bond. And we'd be looking for February 2025 as a special election. Okay, I'm happy to take any questions. And I really appreciate your time today and attention to this. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation, all three of you. It was informative and helpful. Is this, what, the slide deck that you shared, is this on your website or will it be?
Yes, absolutely, accessible to all. And we do have the QR code where people can take the survey or email me.
Perfect, thank you.
Good question. Does the footprint of both Gray Wolf and Helen Holler and the high school and everything allow for a complete replacement and still have facilities and the ability to have school ongoing? Or it'd be impacted, how would this impact day-to-day school activities?
If you don't mind, would you please go back to the overhead of option one? And that'd probably be the easiest way for me to answer it. The, the simple answer is yes. And the reason being is we would, we would build behind where, oh, I'm sorry. We build behind where Holler is today. What I mean by behind is to the north. All right, so we build currently an idea that we have. Now understand, none of this is written in stone. This is an architectural rendering, some ideas that we kicked around. That's a two-story building for Helen Holler to the north of the current Helen Holler, which is represented by a parking lot in that picture. As far as the high school's concerned, we would be building onto H. And when Holler, Holler's new construction is complete, we would use, the old Helen Holler is an empty chair, to affect high school education until the high school was completed. Is that it? It's your question, ma'am? Very good.
I wanted to ask one question.
Oh, just for council, sir, sorry. Yeah, yeah. Anything else from council?
What would you like the council to do or to not do?
I'll be very careful on asking that question. This is just information only since we might run afoul of state law. So this is just info only.
Oh, I thought we were supposed to ask questions.
Well, we can ask certain questions, but not, we're not, we can't be seen as being in favor for or against.
Oh, I, okay, that's not my intention, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't need anything from the council tonight.
I would say that as community members, you would be welcome to take the survey.
Okay. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Trust me, you don't want PDC coming after you.
Hello? You said for the renovations of the high school, you'd be adding on to the H building. Is that, are we not renovating the H building at all?
The H building is not in the plan to be renovated, no.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else from council?
I'm being told the HVAC at H building would be renovated. Or has been, okay.
So just a quick, I don't even know if you can answer it, honestly. Anytime I see total project dollar sign, I always think, how much of that is accounted for, for inflation? And so I was just curious if in these drafts, that that was accounted for or thought about?
Yes, it was. We call that escalation. And so we do have construction escalation consideration. I will say though, that there was discussion at the Long Range Facilities Group about the school construction SCAP money that the ABCD and E buildings would gather later in their life. And we would have to wait until 2031 to collect on those dollars. And the value of that would be 4.7 million. But if you waited that long, the escalation is 8.4 million. So it doesn't make a lot of sense. So thank you for that question.
Thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item six, public comment. And just for those in the audience, if you're here to speak on the public hearing for the fireworks issue, that will be next for that public hearing. So just let you know for this public comment, this is a limited public forum. Individuals providing public comment must not disrupt or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. This is not a forum for hate speech. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support hate speech. Speakers are expected to be courteous and refrain from making hateful comments, sounds, or remarks. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. The city of Squim stands firm in its commitment to being an inclusive community and rejects discrimination of any kind. City clerk.
The Squim City Council has implemented a new procedure for remote public comments during city council meetings. All community members who wish to participate in remote public comment via Zoom or by phone are required to register on the city's website by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The new registration process is designed to streamline and enhance the public comment experience for everyone involved. For individuals attending in person, please take a moment to silence your cell phones. I will collect the sign-in sheet shortly. In-person public comments will be alternated with confirmed registered remote comments. Each person will have three minutes to speak on any topic and there will be a timer visible on the screen. A total of 30 minutes or 10 speakers will be permitted for public comments. Please state your name if you are representing an organization and your city of residence. And we do not have anyone signed up for remote public comment under this general comment portion. Our first person to speak in person is Derek Huntington.
Thank you, Derek Huntington, resident of Squim. I've reached out to the city and I'm waiting for more response, but I also wanted to bring this to the council's attention. I'm here tonight to address the safety issues that have arisen on South 7th Avenue. I'm here tonight to address the safety issues that have arisen on South 7th Avenue because of the construction going on. Before, you could safely get off the road to avoid traffic and other things going on. Now there's no longer an option. I have a video I could share with each of you if you're interested, and you could talk with my daughter, who's also here. And you could come to my house and walk the road and see for yourself also. Walking on the road or crossing to the other side of the road is also not safe because of vehicles that are constantly speeding on South 7th, even with their speed signs. I've lived on South 7th for over 12 years, and speeding has always been an issue. I know there are plans for a sidewalk in the future, but that does not help the current issues that are going, going on. According to the plans, which I have and could also share with you, and what I was told, there's a certain percentage that they have to reach within their permit. And if they do, then there's nothing that really can be done. But my question is, when is being within a percentage of a permit more important than the safety of the public? What happens if someone gets killed or hurt? Thank you. I hope that we can resolve this issue, and thank you.
Can I ask a question? Which part of, South 7th is mostly ripped up right now?
So you guys know South 7th. So there's the sidewalk, and then after the sidewalk end, that they've had forever, and then they have where it ends. And then where the construction starts is basically McCurdy Road, and it goes from McCurdy until you get to the corner of Silver Horn. So that whole section right there, you used to be able to get off either side of the road, and you could safely, you know, if anything happens. Well, now, both sides of the road, there's no way to get off the sides of the road because there's construction on the one side. And then the other side of the road, they completely tore out to do their paving and whatever else they're doing. So there's no way to get safely off the road either, either side.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. That's helpful.
No problem.
Jim Stauffer.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I'm here to speak on Agenda Items HC, and then it was 11A, but now it's six. The North Squim Avenue Bike Lane Sidewalk, encourage you to pass that budget ask there because it's right on down the roadway here, safe routes to schools. Kids, adults will be using that, and so let's get that, please, wrapped up. And I encourage you to do that. So now 11A, or now is six. So, sir, you were trying to ask questions. So go to the forum tomorrow night, right? There's a forum at the high school, and then the QR code, and they will all be there to answer your questions on that. But I highly encourage folks to attend those forums. It's 5:00 PM. When we tried to run a bond in 2012, it was for roughly 110 million, and it would be paid off. Well, we'd be 10 years from it being completed. We would have a high school, we'd have Helen Holler, Bus Barn, all those things. So you see the change in prices. And so encourage, encourage you to attend these meetings and learn more. You can all take the survey, and later you can do a resolution from the city council supporting the school district. And as Superintendent said, our school district goes, we're in two different counties, pretty large area, same size as Fire District 3. And go take a look at the facilities also. Much needed. Thank you. I'll be back for the fireworks.
Dan Maloney, Squim, and a member of Jennings Meadow HOA. I'm here to ask the Squim Council, City Council, to select option two of the SMC-32-110, two access points. This would permit up to 15 homes with a single access point down from 30. I feel that this option will save lives in all emergencies, and will make a safer community for Squim residents.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doug Wright. You've seen me around before. I'm back. I live at, in Hendrickson Community in Squim. And tonight I'd like to address Agenda Item 11F, the MHP fees. I, along with a few other people here tonight, are really happy that you're looking into this concerning unfair and excessive fees within the MHPs in Squim. I know at least one MHP here in town is dealing with this as we speak. So it is here, and it's going to get worse. I believe that Bellingham Municipal Code that you're looking at in the 11F is a good template to follow for Squim. Although I do have a couple of questions. Figures, right? You know me. Okay, BMC 6 dot 16 dot 020, number two. I noticed they have a $10 fee. I don't see any reason for that when the state already allows those notices to lead to eviction. So why would a $10 fee be allowed anyway, to rub salt into a wound? I would also ask that BMC 6 dot 16 dot 020, number 16, that you include personal check as a payment method of all the methods that were listed. A lot of people still pay with personal check. Okay. And short and sweet, in conclusion, I ask for the protection of the citizens of Squim that you incorporate similar language from Bellingham's Municipal Code into the Squim Municipal Code. And as always, we appreciate y'all's thoughtful consideration. We've been working with y'all for quite a bit on overlay and other things, and we appreciate your help. And as usual, we're available. Thank you very much.
Pamela Griffith Pond. That concludes public comment.
So just a comment on Mr. Stauffer's comment. If the Squim Council wishes to do something like you mentioned, a resolution, Christina can give us a rundown on how we proceed with that type of thing, if that's what council decides to do. All right, moving on, item seven, public hearing. All right, the subject of this public hearing is Squim Municipal Code 8.20, Fireworks and Sky Lanterns Code Amendment. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And turn on emergency staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Zamel, Community and Economic Development Department. We are here tonight for a public hearing upon the request of the council, excuse me, upon the request of the council to present a ban, banning the sales of fireworks within the city limits of Squim. The city of Squim did ban the detonation of fireworks years ago. And so we have prepared draft material for you to consider. A few things to note for you under the fire code, if council should choose to pass an ordinance that does ban the sales of fireworks, it would not be implemented until 12 months past the effective date. So you may still see, we may still see stands around as we're waiting for the implementation if you choose to go that direction. At this point, staff recommends you open the public hearing. They'll be available for any questions after.
Is there any questions from council to staff? All right. We'll now move on to public comment. As this is a public hearing, all audience members wishing to make comment will be allowed at three minutes to speak. When it is your time to speak, please give your name and whether you reside within the city limits of Squim. Please avoid repetitious comments, personal attacks, or comments not related to the subject before the council. The city of Squim supports the public's First Amendment right to free speech, but it does not support the use of hate speech or offensive language. Any offensive words and conduct shared by the public do not reflect the city's values. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
We do. We have one remote public comment request. Randall Curly is online. And Mr. Curly, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name, as stated, is Randall Curly. I am the area manager for TNT Fireworks. I live at 3503 West John Day Avenue in Kennebec, Washington, and that makes me not a resident of Squim. I would like to start tonight with a question. Would you ban the Squim Lavender Festival if 3.15% of the population called in complaints about the beer garden? How people were possibly or actually leaving the festival and need created, and it is a risk to the people of Squim? I ask that because that is what is happening right now with fireworks. Let's go over some quick numbers. My numbers are based off of the World Population Review and the US Census. Squim's 2024 population is 8,247. The average household size is 1.95, and the average family size is 2.6. In 2024, TNT Fireworks and Big Dog Fireworks had an estimated number of transactions to be right around 1,446. Fireworks is traditionally a family experience. So based off the census numbers, that is between 2,819 people to 3,759 total people who engaged with fireworks. That equates to a range of 22.7%, up to 45.5% of the Squim population. Now let's look at the complaints. There were seven reported. That is between 13.65 and 18.2 people if you go off the census, or 0.16% to 0.22% of the total population. Now I have been told that that number is low, so let's raise that up to 100 complaints. That would be between 195 to 260 complaints, or 2.36% up to 3.15% of the Squim population. Based off these numbers, it is clear that the amount of people who support and buy fireworks is exponentially higher than do not. I even raised the number of complaints by 14%, and that is still 10% or 10 times lower than those who support and buy fireworks. So my question is, should you ban the festival or fireworks if only 3.15% of the population complained? Or should you work with the organizers to make sure that more signage and education was available for those who participate in the festival or bought fireworks? Thank you for your time. TNT Fireworks is always in favor of a safe and legal 4th of July, and will always follow the local ordinances and laws. A successful 4th of July is a safe 4th of July. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, we will transition to in-person comments. First person is Herb Cent.
Thank you, everyone. And I hope you can deal with me because I have vocal cord issues and health issues that make this difficult. I do not have a blanket answer to the fireworks issue, but I do feel that it is somewhat disingenuous for a city to be the only city on the peninsula that allows sales of fireworks within its limits. And fireworks, despite laws, will always be set off. Fireworks are going to be set off in the city. They're going to be set off in the county. I'm going to get into some, two basic questions. And I was very instrumental in getting some fireworks being banned in both city of Squim and in Port Angeles. The city of Squim is the only one on the peninsula that continues to sell fireworks, and that is what I'm objecting to. When I say it's not going to be an answer, but at least it gets you out of the liability or some safety issues. Let these people deal with the county, put up their own roadwork signs on the Old Olympic Highway or on Highway 101, where the old recycling plant was, but not in a crowded and very dangerous area that is a parking lot of Walmart. I will also disagree with the other person. It is closer to 60% of people who supported bans on fireworks. We would not have gotten it passed if that had not been the case. Even in China, they are not allowed in the central areas of most of the Chinese cities. And that, those prohibited areas are increasing with every year. They just do not want the risk, the liability of basically having citizens bring explosives and being able to set them off. They monitor the sales of these things very well. I'm seeing my time is going off. One of the reasons I am also very much against where the city has allowed the siding of some of these things, a parking lot like Walmart will eventually, or can be, a terrorist threat. It could be an accident waiting to be happened. But just imagine if a car runs into one of these tents and explodes, what would happen to the people around it? Thank you very much.
Jim Stauffer.
Hi, good evening again. I'm Jim Stauffer. Said I was going to be back for the fireworks. I'm a county resident, but I'm speaking on behalf of Trinity United Methodist Church. As most of you know, we do a contract partnership with the city every 4th of July for the parking lot use. And I'm sorry, the first gentleman missed the, the notifications because there was several notifications this past 4th of July. Myself, I stopped three different folks' families from lighting up fireworks in the church parking lot and then in the grass field. So now we're, we're talking about a safety and liability issue here. City would be on tap if something happened to the church there with somebody lighting up illegal fireworks. But let's go back to, you have one code that says, or you have the code says, you can't light up fireworks inside the city limits. But then you can go down and buy some, the visitors, the guests that come here to our city, to this area's condition, this valley, they don't know the lines of what is the city limits and county limits. Lot of confusion out there. And the ones that I personally stopped, they didn't know, and their answer was, I just bought these. Why can't I shoot them off? So you're, a lot of confusion there. And then I'm going to go back a little bit to my days in the Coast Guard. I used to hate 4th of July because people, it was amateur hour, and people were lighting up flares. And we spent a lot of time chasing these down because it was, I rest, we responded to a rescue, and it was somebody just lighting off flares. So your safety, liability issues, stop the confusion between, and you have a high risk out there, fires, personal injury. And yeah, we're the only city on the peninsula that still allows it to sell. I would submit that those nonprofits could probably find another source of, of revenue to support to support their functions other nonprofits do here in the area. Thank you for your time, and I encourage a revision of your code to not allow fireworks to be sold inside the city limits of Squim. Thank you.
Lori Gilchrist, 538 North Seventh Avenue. I want to thank you all for your consideration of banning fireworks sale in the Squim Skidoo Limits. I have lived here now for 22 years and have had to deal with my mailbox being blown up, my dogs being terrorized, and fellow veterans having PTSD issues. As the gentleman before me have said, I just want to agree with them that it is very confusing to sell fireworks and then not allow them to be set off. We need to be one way or the other. I am very concerned about fire because of wildland fires now. The house down the street from me burned down because of fireworks when I lived on Hemlock Street. So these are very dangerous things that we're dealing with. I also would like to really know who has been given permits in the past and where those people are actually from. Who is actually getting the money from these fireworks stands? I think giving them a whole year after this gives them time to adjust to find a new way to raise money. So I respectfully request that you pass this ordinance to ban fireworks sale in our city. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Griffith Pond. I am a Squim resident at 460 Blue Glacier Loop. When I was a young parent, fireworks sales supported everything from church summer camp to the high school band, and working in a firework booth was just part of being a parent. But on July 4th, 1990, my views on fireworks changed forever. I was an intern chaplain at Emmanuel Medical Center in Portland. It was a holiday, and I wasn't on call. So my family enjoyed a barbecue on my dad's patio about a mile from the hospital, and we watched as helicopters brought in burn victims, one after another. The next day, my colleague Ben, who had been on call and was up all night, recounted stories of horrible accidents and families devastated by loss and burdened with guilt. I heard about the progress of those burn victims day after day throughout the summer. That same year, the roof of a house neighboring the one I grew up in caught fire from a bottle rocket made of so-called Safe and Same fireworks. We tell our children not to play with matches, but many communities still dedicate an entire day each year to doing just that, despite the injuries and the fires that are certain to occur and the innumerable lost and injured pets. Squim is among the communities that recognize the danger of fireworks and bans setting them off. But somehow Squim allows the sale of fireworks residents are not allowed to use. Can you imagine a law allowing the sale of alcohol to minors but prohibiting them from drinking it? Selling something to people with the understanding that they can't use it is a tacit invitation to them to break the law. Squim has taken the first step towards being a safe community by banning the use of fireworks. Now it's time to ban selling fireworks as well to make our community safe and to help ensure that our laws are respected. Thank you for your consideration.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, I will now close the public comment portion of the hearing. Thank you to everyone that provided public comment. Is there any council discussion?
Hi. We are also getting letters to move the firework venue out of Cary Blake Park and to cancel and not have professional fireworks anymore. And at that, at this time, that is not what this council is talking about. Somebody else can bring that up in the future, not me. This conversation is about banning the sale of fireworks in the city limits, and that's all.
I guess I just have a quick comment. Something that can be really confusing for residents is how many, I don't know what we, I guess, islands of space in city limits that aren't in city limits. And so I just wanted to make a quick comment of how confusing that can be for residents also. And it's something that I hope we can address in the future, but knowing that it's a reality that I know people are very upset that people still light off fireworks. But in a lot of cases, they have every right to do that if they're in one of those islands. So I just want people to be aware of that.
Anything further?
I would like to make one note for the record. Council, you all should have received about six written comments, emails that we received. Those were provided for you at the dais today. Those came in after the agenda was documented and put together, so. Thank you. May I ask another question? Are we, at this time, required to have another hearing? No. This concludes the requirement for a public hearing. And council, in the materials presented to you tonight, sorry, I jumped ahead myself. I believe that the materials request you consider directing staff for the next steps, but the materials do have a draft ordinance attached for you for consideration and review. Make a motion. I move to direct staff to present an ordinance on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions? Any opposed? CNN motion passes. All right. Moving on, item eight, consent agenda.
Items on tonight's consent agenda are claim vouchers totaling $1,422,538.71. City Council meeting minutes for September 23rd, 2024. North Squim Avenue sidewalk and bike lane project, a contract amendment. A new SMC 20.30 Fee and Lue and ordinance. SMC 12.16, work obstructing public places, an ordinance. Water quality agreement with the Department of Ecology, a resolution. City manager's applicant agent for the Hazard Mitigation Grant application, a resolution. Used dump bed medium duty truck purchase, a resolution. And a used flatbed medium duty truck purchase, a resolution.
I have some, just a quick follow-up question about item eight D.
You have to, you have to remove what you can.
I can't ask the question right now.
What's your question?
Um, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, just noticing is at the end, it has a five-year limit. And then the funds that are collected, are those earmarked for the particular project that they are collected for? I'm seeing a nod, okay. And then, so they can't be spent on other projects? If would they correct, okay. And then, I guess we're on the hook for the interest. That was the only piece that I was, in my thought process as I looked through it. If it didn't get sold, spent, then at the end of that five-year period, we have to pay it back.
I'm seeing a nod from also.
Maybe, okay. Well, just, it's just interesting. I'm sorry, I should have probably asked these questions of Paul before the meeting, but.
Good evening. For the record, Paul Bucic, Public Works Director. The Fee and Lue is set up so that we can collect the funds that will be used to build a portion of a project we already have in play. In other words, if it's a block to block, and the applicant is only building a half of it, and we have plans for building the full block, we would take the Fee and Lue and apply that towards a total cost. We have a more uniform approach and look, and also enables us to use those funds as match funds for grants we can pursue. If we don't do it in five years, then yes, we have to return the funds and any accumulated interest because basically we're acting a bit as a bank for the developer. And if we don't use the funds as intended, they get the money back plus any accumulated interest that is garnered on those funds.
Hmm, okay. All right, thank you very much. I really appreciate the clarification. It sounds like there is, it's a very narrow scope that it's used, that this is going to be used in.
Very much so, which is why we're going to be selective about when we use this. I'm not going to suggest that we would acquire those Fee and Lue funds from every developer or be willing to accept that from every developer. Unless we have a high degree of confidence that we will have a project built in those five years, we would require the developer to go forward and build the frontage improvements on their own.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? CNN motion passes. Moving on to general business, Squim municipal code 17.32110, two points of access required, code amendment, second touch.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lindsay Zamel, Community and Economic Development Director, still for the City of Squim. And tonight, we have second touch on our two points of access code amendment. At our last meeting where we held the public hearings, some public comments were noted and questions were asked of staff. We went back and did a little more research. The interim control ordinance appears to have been drafted off of the limitations of the Washington State Fire Code. The Fire Code states no more than 30 lots with, or 30 units with a single access. The code was drafted with the term lots versus units. Staff has prepared an additional information in the agenda cover sheet for you tonight to consider as we move forward with, as you move forward with consideration of your options. In addition to the material that was presented for the public hearing, you have received the Transpo Connectivity Memo. This is a Squim connectivity memorandum that was provided from our third-party consultant, the Transportation Group, Transpo Group, and they run and model our concurrency for us. They did identify the additional law changes with unit counts and the allowances of ADUs through the model. And in addition to the memo, this memo was received and read by the Planning Commission. As I noted at the last hearing, there was no testimony during the Planning Commission public hearings. We did not understand some of the challenges and/or concerns. This is not new information to the analysis. Whichever direction that City Council chooses to go tonight, a new public hearing would not be required as we did meet the criteria of that. And the additional option provided to you tonight is a reduction and not an increase to the impact. But you will note that there is a second ordinance listed as option two that does have one change to it, which specifically states that it would be, single lot access would be allowed, I'm trying to finding it here. Subdivisions of more than 15 lots must provide two separate points of access. The option one ordinance in your packet tonight has that listed as 30 still.
It's 15?
The second, the option provided to you tonight is 15.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that's under attachment six in your agenda.
Brandon, may I go ahead and ask Lindsay a question? Lindsay, there was some concerns raised at the last meeting about the language allowing for, not allowing for kind of a cumulative impact. I remember a member of the public talking about an adjacent piece of property that could be developed with multiple lots using the existing point of entry in the developed thing. And they were concerned about this being, having language that would take into account that it would limit the cumulative number of lots. I'm, as I read this, I'm assuming that that, that this addresses that. It would be 15 total, not this new developer with less than 15 attaching his development to an existing development that has one single point of entry. Am I making sense?
I think you're making sense. There would, any lots, any new subdivision over 15, well, based upon the options presented to you tonight, either have any new subdivision over 30 lots would require two points of access, or any new subdivision over 15 lots would require two points of access. How the current access to vacant land, that is generally a civil issue of how people are either landlocked or not landlocked into their land, that we require them to show that they have rights to reach the land before. We do do concurrency analysis through the Transpo Group when projects come in to see how projects and the general users of the future development will flow through to our different intersections, maybe use the back streets to avoid Washington, or different maneuvers that are a possibility based upon human nature and driving. And so those analysis and concurrency requirements are analyzed in detail and then shared and presented at the hearing for hearing examiner for his consideration.
Counsel, sorry, for purposes of the record, Christina Nelson Gross, City Attorney. Sorry, Siri, if you didn't understand that, but. To Dan, as I understand your question, you are concerned about essentially daisy chaining subdivisions after, one after another, correct? So as Director Zamel had indicate, had indicated before that this is modeled off of the Fire Code, right? Which we are required to adopt as part of the state building codes. And in that code, it says that if more than, and I'm going to look at Lindsay here to make sure I'm getting this right because I don't have the language in front of me, but more than, more than that threshold that is established in the Fire Code must be sprinkled. So in this case, right, if, if somebody, if we had subsequent developments of 13 lots and then another one was 12 and stuff like that, you would need to go and through, add, add sprinklers to those subsequent homes. Your initial subdivision is presumed to be appropriately safe because of the Your initial subdivision is presumed to be appropriately safe because of the mitigating conditions, but each little daisy chain would still have to meet those thresholds beyond that because of the way the Fire Code is written. And I see Lindsay nodding, so I think that means I'm right.
I'm in concurrence.
Okay, so that's that, the code issue, and then the rights of way access would be a separate, separate issue with the existing development.
Correct. And that is what Director Zamel was saying is part of our review process, that we always look to see if the applicant has the appropriate rights to use the roadways and easements and property and any other property that they need to access that. That is just part of standard review process.
Something else to consider is that if the city is no longer going to allow private streets, see, as we stand now, the HOAs are private streets and a builder cannot latch on, use another HOA as access to get to a road. They're considered private streets. People are not supposed to be driving down Keeler to take a shortcut to 101 because part of Keeler is a private road. But if the city's not going to allow any more private streets, then developers can potentially latch on to entrance and exits at other developments, correct?
That would not be pertinent to tonight. I guess I'm not understanding how that's. So connectivity and the connectivity of traffic flow, our current code does require that they be built to public standards. We do allow private streets under our code and subdivision codes still.
Oh, I thought that they were doing away with it in the future.
And, and that is not a part of tonight's ordinance, but I do, we, there is potential for future discussions.
Okay.
And as clarification on that, the code that Lindsay is referring to is that current code still allows private streets if they're with, if they're within a gated community. So we've not eliminated it 100%.
Okay, but I, what made me think of it is what Counselor Butler said about using a developer using another development's access points.
Under, that would not be something that would be within our purview to prohibit or, because then we would be interfering with frankly, two private transactions, right, between private individuals or entities. So that's not necessarily going to be within our purview. Let's say applicant A or HOA A had private streets and developer B wanted to come in and access HOA streets. Developer B would still have to have public streets because that is the mandate of our current code. So they would meet that, but we would require them to, them being developer, to see that they had adequate access, whether it be through payment of money to the HOA. We may even require upgrades to meet city standards, even though they were still private streets. That's, that's not something that we would normally get involved with because those are private transactions between the HOA and the applicant.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I would go for the one that says 15 or fewer. Yes, because I just, I, I, I don't know, I guess I worry too much. I think 30, it's unsafe to have 30 houses with only one way in and out. That's just me. Thank you.
So I concur with Counselor Downer and move to adopt ordinance option two after consideration of the public testimony. Additional information provided by the connectivity memo and details of Washington State Fire Code, section D 107.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any opposed? CNN motion passes.
Thank you, Council.
All right, reports, youth liaison.
For the purposes of the record, Malia Nelson, youth liaison. Okay, so Halloween weekend is coming up and there are a lot of community events to keep your eye out for. On October 26th, the Squim Education Foundation has their annual fundraiser. They're raising money for teaching grants, so this is definitely a good event to show up to if you are interested in supporting the Squim School District. Also, on October 26th, the high school hosts haunted hallways each year. This is where clubs from the high school put on a themed room around their club and people from the community can bring their kids and it's kind of like a room by room trick or treat and also a little bit of learning along the way. I believe that's 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, but I'm not quite sure. On November 9th, the Boys and Girls Club has their annual auction. The Boys and Girls Club obviously does a lot of great work in our community, so this auction is important to helping their initiatives and supporting that. They are looking for volunteers, I believe, for setup and take down. So if you're interested, contact someone from Boys and Girls Club. This past weekend, on October 12th, the High School Interact Club did their rally in the alley. This is where people from the community can bring things they're trying to give away in their trunks, and then the interact students will take care of that trash for them and put in a dumpster. So there's just going to be an official report on that later, but that's all I have for today.
Malia, one quick question. Did I write down, get the right date for the Boys and Girls Club auction is November 9th?
Yeah, November 9th.
Thank you.
I have one follow up also. When is the next rally in the alley in case folks that are listening are, are thinking, oh, that would be cool? So is there every six months?
I believe we have one in the fall and the spring, so I can give an official date when that comes closer.
Thank you. But yeah, next one's in the springtime. Thank you.
See you, manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Nice to meet with you. I'll move quickly through a long list of things. I started looking over my calendar to, you know, we've gone three weeks without meeting and I just wanted you to know that I continue to meet with the county officials, Mark Osias, Todd Milkie, Tim Dalton, Colleen McLeir and her board, et cetera. Met with Paul Jarkovich from the Port, Port Angeles. So if any of you, I have regular meetings with all of them. So if you, and we, it's agenda driven and it's usually pretty busy, but it's mostly just communication and just touching base. But if you ever have any issue or questions or anything you'd like me to ask them, we've got regular scheduled meetings and they're quite productive. Speaking of productive, I did have a, I just wanted you to know, we held a senior management retreat last Friday, and that was successful too. We really concentrated on the customer experience, the resident experience. Not that it's bad. We actually get a lot of compliments from our residents, but we put some action plans in place to try to enhance all of that. And so that will be an ongoing effort. We just want to be known for that as a city. So anyway, a couple of dates I wanted you to be aware of before I get into the actual department updates. This coming Wednesday, so two days away, is the PPH, this behavior health has their housing dedication over here on Fifth Avenue. That's at four o'clock. They have five rooms there and they, you know, receive some funding from the Housing Solution Committee Group and from the county. And so that, that's a really nice asset for the city. They'll do some ribbon cutting there. Also, on Tuesday, October 22nd, from six to eight, the Clallam County will be hosting a public off channel reservoir meeting at Guy Cole regarding their new updated plans. So that will be down there. And then we finally, another date, just to drop on your calendar, again, in October is the 25th, and this will be at three o'clock. And this is for the McCord, Ruth C. McCord Memorial Park dedication. We started by asking legislatures and the family what dates work for them and try to coordinate that with seven people. But we finally got a date not too late into the winter, and so that's on the.
What was the date and time again on that?
Yeah, October 25th at 3:00 PM. So we just met Friday. Once we got those dates, we met Friday to start putting all of the operations together. And that's only a couple of weeks away, so we're kind of scrambling for that, but.
And Matt, have you invited the Gary Oak Society to attend?
We haven't really invited anybody yet. So I met with, with Barb today, our communication. So she's, we're putting a long list of people to invite, so I'll make sure that they're on the list.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they reached out after the conclusion of the sale. They're very, very meaningful property for Gary Oak restoration and conservation. Thank you.
Well, and rightfully so, the whole north side of that property is covered with Gary Oaks or, you know, has a significant number of those, so, which we will honor. Okay, so let me quickly go through some department updates. Sue and her team continue to work with the state auditor's office for the 2223 financial accountability audit. I was interviewed on Friday with one of the members there, and that's an ongoing process. And Sue wanted me to remind you that she's just working on Q3 quarter, third quarter report, and we'll be bringing that back to the council soon. Just, I guess, an FYI, the communications department, some of you have suggested and that we are now posting any proclamations that you do, we'll be posting to our social media. We've always posted them on a website, but actually pushing them out in, in our social media, we'll, we'll make those announcements as well. And you'll also see a banner on our website that lists, points people to the 2025 budget, just so that our, and of course, we made quite a bit of statements about that in our newsletter too, so that the public can have input on that. From the Department of Community Development, the Tyler implementation is getting very close to going live. It looks like at the end of the month, we'll be moving our planning department into a digitalization of all plans and whatnot. Lindsay also wanted me to let you know that staff reports done on the Rain Shadow subdivision, that's another 24 lots that she just got done, and there's a public hearing scheduled on the 24th of October for that. So continued development, really a lot of different places. And Ethan Walker is our new assistant planner, and he just recently started, so they're, they've added two FTEs to the planning department, so I feel real good about that. I'll move quickly through HR department. Emily wanted to let you know that we're, we continue negotiations with the non-uniform labor group. Their next meeting's on the 15th, and then there's a closed session planned for the 28th. Next time you all meet, we'll have a chance to visit with you about the status of that and get some input from you for that. I think I told you on our last visit that we had tried to hire an IT manager and it didn't really work. We had, I think, 28 applicants. Well, we rewrote it, actually made it tougher and, but more accurate to what we really see the future being and the skillset that we need. And I thought we raised the bar fairly significantly, but that's what we needed. And now we have 31 applicants, so we're, we're starting the, the screening process on that. I just got the top 14 today from HR, so we'll hopefully have some good information for you on that right away. Probably the only, only thing left in HR, I just wanted to thank my directors. You know, we've been interviewing our staff for three years now doing the surveys and the, we've, I've asked the directors this year to get close to their data. We, HR's pretty much, you know, been in control of running that whole process, but I really wanted to thank our directors for inserting themselves into that process. They're, they've taken some training in the stat, in the Gallup website and, and the analysis, how to, to utilize that data so they can, and they have access to their own department data. So it's, they're really taking ownership and, and very engaged in that. So I just want to publicly thank them for kind of a change in process there, and they're putting work plans and together whatever around their own people. So that, that was, I'm very excited about that. Moving on to the police department, of course, they worked very closely with fire district number three on the public safety event at Kerry Blake, I think last Saturday, and not this last Saturday, but Saturday four, really well attended. Police department had lots of public support there. On FTE, there's still two vacancies there, but they're doing background checks and they've had, held some oral board interviews of seven candidates, so hopefully we'll have some good information coming out of that as well. And I want to thank the chief for submitting a grant to the, what's called the Squim Dungeon Hospital Guild to, for three AEDs that he's going to put into the different police cars. We're trying to outfit all of the patrol cars with AEDs, and so he's able to secure that and was recently granted that request. So thank you for that kind of last minute effort. Some really great news out of the public works department. Is Paul still here? I'm trying to go quickly, but this is, it's, you know, three weeks not being able to report to you all. They, Megan and working with Paul and some of us on the second floor, we have recently updated and will be, soon be posting the water fact sheet. There are some residents that had questions about, so as soon, we'll send you a notice as soon as that's updated. It wasn't off, but you know, it's been six months or whatever, and so that's been updated a little more. Things are clarified and a little bit easier to see, and we'll be posting that. But some, some few residents had some concerns about, some concerns about our water volumes and whatnot, and we're looking good there, also looking very good. So they just, of course, just finished the lead service line inventory project, which, which is evaluating all of our pipes to see if we have lead in any of them, and the answer is no. So really exciting that our water system is completely lead free, and that was a kind of a federal mandated evaluation. I guess I should call out the water streets and sewer crews that did a fantastic job down at that public safety fair. They had their, their, you know, their trucks and a lot of their equipment down there. We just got the, the plans back for the park across the street. It's at 30% complete and we're just reviewing that. So that's exciting that we keep trying to move that forward. It just takes time and money, but we're trying desperately to try to get that corner done.
Are you referring to Centennial Place?
Centennial Park, thank you, yes. We also, with the help of Megan, just submitted a, a application, was submitted to the opportunity fund board for $550,000 for a new water pressure zone. And if awarded, that will serve up to 24 homes on the south side of 101, so a big ask, but we feel like our application was really thorough and will meet all the requirements and criteria, hopefully to be runner up or, you know, to be elected for that award. The public works, you know, public works also was recently told by the Highway Safety Improvement Program that we received $1.2 million for upgrading three traffic signals and installing multiple public pedestrian safety crossings. So again, you know, this is Megan applying for grants, but this, I think you know that we have these boxes at the bottom of each of ours. So we have, we've put in some new things for our signals, the cameras on top and the software to sync them, but the hardware inside the, the boxes that run the signals, not that sync them, are 30, 40 years old. And so glad to receive a $1.2 million to upgrade three of those. And the Fish and Wildlife Department just issued permits for Kerry Blake to be able to work on their friendship vegetation removal, and so that will start in October as well. I feel like I've just gone through a lot of stuff, but I'll skip over the IT things, a lot of IT hardware that we're upgrading and needing to, to do. Finally, from legal, I wanted you to know that we're also posting. that we're also posting a new fact sheet on the hearing examiner process. I think a lot of residents get confused about how that has been put in place. And so the reason we do these is so that you can, you know, kind of point your constituents to these kinds of things as your approach with questions. And finally, I guess, let me just kind of skip to the end here. The Washington State Supreme Court, who really establishes the rules for attorneys, they're looking at significantly reducing the number of cases that public defenders can have at any given time. And it looks like the court's going to pass those rules. Although we don't have, that doesn't have a direct effect on us that if that passes, and it's, like I said, likely to do, it may come back to us in the form of increased costs because they're going to need more, you know, more attorneys to be able to prosecute and, or defend. And then on the prosecuting side, again, we'll just have to see where that goes. We, we just got notice from AWC on a way that council members can respond to that. And you can read more of the criteria relative to that. So maybe I'll just send you that tomorrow in an email. But you can still, once you understand the issues at hand, then you can submit written comments and have a voice in that. And we would recommend that you do. Yeah, the final comments are due on the 31st. So you've got some time to read that and to respond. All right. So I've skipped a few things, but I'm sorry, I'm taking so much, taking so much time. I really, it's tough when we have those three weeks before, and I'm trying to prioritize what to hear. Any questions from council? Thank you so much. Sorry to take so much time.
All right, moving on to council reports. Council Butler submitted his report in writing. So if any questions on his homelessness task force, I'll be glad to answer them. Other than that, if anybody else has anything.
Really briefly, I am getting ready this weekend to go to the final installment of the Washington Collaborative Elected Leaders Institute, which is being offered for the first time in this state to elected officials as, by the William D. Ruckelhaus Center, which is a collaboration between Washington State University and the University of Washington's Evan School of Public Policy and Governance. This final session will be in the Tri-Cities. I am looking forward to finishing up that, the organized class times with the Ruckelhaus Center and the about 45 other elected officials across the state that are participating, including Port Angeles City Councilor Drew Schwab. We're on a team representing the peninsula in this. We've been focusing our efforts and our conversation around how to better support affordable housing, the expansion of affordable housing on the peninsula. And at the conclusion, Drew and I look forward to putting what we've worked on together and then engaging in the process, that processes of good collaborative community conversation around that topic. And we look forward to bringing that back to all of you. So thank you. That's what I have to report at this time.
Anyone else?
I'll just go real quick. On September 28th, I went to the Veterans Build. They're building two duplexes in Port Angeles Habitat for Humanity is. And they did what they call a wall raising. And Mr. Dalton was there also. And I had never attended that. I had in the countryside in Ohio, but not out in the, in the city. And on the 4th of October, I met with Mr. Dalton. We talked about some housing issues. There's not much new going in, other than that the Peninsula Behavioral Health people are opening up their former offices as housing, which is a wonderful idea. And on the 7th of October, I went to Habitat Breakfast in Port Angeles. And that was, they have a lot of enthusiasm and for the future of the things that they can do. And they had a lot of people attend. And on the, this coming Wednesday, I will report back, but the Transit Committee will be voting on putting Narcan dispenser at the Squim Transit Center, which is just down the street from us. It's not really our property, it's theirs. And the harm reduction people did recommend to them that that would be a good place to put it. So they, they will be, the board will be voting on it this Wednesday. And I will report back on how that goes. Thank you.
All right, moving on to open council discussion. City Council Youth Liaison update.
Alrighty, so we've had two applicants, and we've had two interviews. And I have bad news that I love them both. And so I'm going to throw out an out of the box kind of solution. Okay, if you'll hear me out. So in our guidelines, there is a little blurb about youth liaisons may be appointed at any time during the prescribed term. And so my proposal is to appoint one of these student reps for six months and the other student rep for six months. Malia still would like to be a youth liaison. And I think, and then also changing the guidelines, like the timeline for liaisons, but we can talk about that after we talk about this. So I just wanted to hear any council input on if you would, does that sound okay to you to have one for six months and the other for six months? Would you prefer we have an executive session to discuss the applicants, to only pick one? Can we have both? So I just wanted to ask how everybody feels about that.
If they're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
I'd say, I'd like just to expand on this for a second. Would it be, because if we make an exception because we have two really awesome ones this time around, not that I'm saying that we should have only one of both of these students who are really interested in public service and city government, my thought would be, what if we had both of them at the same time? So that way, I mean, being a city councillor now for 10 months, I would say the first six months is just like, it just, you know, like, they'd just be getting into their stride. And so it just, I think that it would be a better experience for the youth liaison to have that full year, especially because that's been our model thus far, is that if you're a liaison, you're on for this term for a year potentially. So I just wanted to stay out loud that I feel like it's kind of a slippery slope if we make a special, a special situation just for this. So what if, I mean, yeah, hypothetically, what if there's room for two more chairs down there? Or I don't know, maybe we have to go down the executive session route. I'm just wanted to expand on that, that I think a six month window would be inconsistent and also not allow that individual to have the full youth liaison experience.
Got you. Anybody else? I would like to have at least four, like guidance. So in order for next steps. Malia.
Okay, I'd also like to say for six months, I think there definitely are times of the year that are like a lot busier than others. So like, say, we appoint one of them in November, and they start their term in December. They would be executing their term till July, I believe. And then the other youth liaison would be in term from July to December. I think that, like, for three months out of that year, it would be really hard. Like, I found it very hard personally in the summer to, to make it to meetings. And I think that's why Georgia and I work so well, is because we, like, had an alternating schedule. So maybe if we came at that approach, where if we appointed both, and then they alternate which one came to meetings, that could work. But I do think it would be an uneven experience if it was six months.
Christina?
Yeah. So this is totally within council's purview to change, but just please note that you, that staff would recommend that you actually change your guidelines to allow three before you voted on that, right? And so, and then whatever that process would entail. So just as a general word of caution, we would want to be careful about cramming too many people up here. But I'm sure you're totally aware of that.
Anybody else have input? I can start calling on people. You don't have to reply, but I'll just call your name. Yeah.
If you, if you like them, I like them. That's why we appointed you to do this. You know what I mean, to, because you're young.
I like the idea of an alternate, you know, taking turns or, I know you guys are busy. So even maybe all three of them could just make sure two of them show up.
I'm okay with that.
Looking to Christina, then it sounds like we would need a process to have to update this.
Yeah. So I would, that would be my next step, if, you know, if I get enough people to, I guess I'll just ask, is everybody okay with changing the guidelines to up to three reps? And then on like some kind of rotating schedule, or I guess just changing it up to three right now, I think would be the easiest way to do that.
I would rather that than have, like you were saying, six months and then six months, because there's something to be said for continuity. Malia, you're a senior, is that correct?
Yeah, so she's got the institutional experience now. And having the other two being able to get that, assuming that they're, are they freshmen, juniors, sophomores?
Juniors.
Juniors, okay. So then they would, yeah, that, then you could potentially have a seasoned person carrying on the next year. So, yeah.
All right. So I guess I will formally motion that we change our youth liaison guidelines to be up to three student reps. And that's my motion.
I second that.
Moving seconded, any further discussions? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Everybody, for that discussion, that was very helpful, actually. And I will let the applicants know about the good news. Yeah, thank you, everybody.
All right, 11C. I think it's you, Mr. Council Butler?
Yeah, thank you. Just quick update on this. The city staff has been in dialogue with the county Harm Reduction Center about the, the city engaging in a collaborative effort with the county on the placement of naloxone. I believe that MOU between the county and the city is in process. There are some points there that are needing to be sorted out. And so that, that's in process. My encouragement in meeting with the city manager and Chief Hill and so on was to get through that process, get the MOU in place, and then as opportunities come up to place boxes in consultation with the Harm Reduction, then we, we don't, we've got the process behind us. And we can, the city staff can just move ahead with that. So there isn't, right now, an obvious gap that the city has control over in the city where there isn't either a box already or one being placed, particularly if the transit authority comes through with the.
And the two churches.
Two churches and, and not Peninsula Labor Health, what's the other one?
Squim Health and Housing.
No, Squim Health and Housing. So there's, there's, there are several opportunities already being managed by other entities. And so if the city were to find an opportunity, it'd be good to have the agreement in place so it's ready to go. So at this point, I think that's about it, right? Good.
All right, 11D. So this came out of our agenda meeting, and we were just having a little bit of discussion on committee reports. I think it was, what do we want? Do we want to see more of how Councilor Butler submitted his report, where individual councils just email their reports in? Then if we have questions during that segment, we can either ask it during this time or ask an email, or do we want to continue with verbal committee reports? So if there was any discussion on that.
I'm okay with the emailing it in. It's a public, I mean, it's public access to it, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was my thought as well, and why I wanted to model it for this particular meeting. My experience is by the time we get to the, the reports, often the meeting has gone quite long. Our attention span is, is quite short. And, and if they're prepared comments and written, then the public has a more robust access to the information that we all want to share, rather than ad hoc, ad lib comments. So.
I like it.
I'd like to suggest that we do that. And we, we hold ourselves as a council to the same standard we expect city staff to.
I'm looking at someone. All right, any other questions?
I wasn't speaking about the city manager's report. I'm speaking for the council.
I have a question about this. So if we were to do that, what, what is the packet deadline that they would, staff would like to have those by?
Ideally would be Tuesday at noon.
Before the meeting, obviously. Tuesday, the, okay. And, okay, interesting. I, thank you. And then it sounds, I like that, I think it'd also allow us to, I'd like to ask if there would be, I mean, if, well, we'd have to, okay. I'm just trying to figure out how to do this in such a way that I feel like it wouldn't add too much of an extra burden on myself. So I think my comment, my, my reports may just be like photocopy of what I've handwritten, like my notes during the meeting or some sort. And unless I feel like I need to prepare some sort of special narrative. Okay, thank you.
My question is, can I have the option of not having a report? Because a lot of the time, we come to these, the council committee report part, and I really have nothing to report.
I think if you have something, send it in. Anything else? All right, Gold Star Memorial. Can I kick us off, Kathy?
Yes. In case people didn't know, when we were talking about receiving the property or buying the property from the McCord family after she passed away, her wishes for use, one of the uses for it would be as a park for seniors and children and veterans to use. And then Brandon and I started thinking, I told him, I said, where I used to live in southeast Ohio, we had a Gold Star Memorial. And so he, when the next time he went to a veterans conference, because Brandon has served active duty, I have not, he talked to some Gold Star Memorial people. And I think it's about time that we had something in a city park like that. We do have some benches. We have plaques. We have other places to honor the veterans. But I think it's about time that we had, we do have some veterans' graves that were never moved out of, what's it called, Pioneer Park, off in the corner. But I think it would be nice in our new park. What I envisioning is a very small memorial. The VFW is very excited about that. They also want a small memorial with it or next to it. I would like a little concrete around it. I would like a bench facing it. I would like a flagpole. I would like two veterans' parking spots. And I think with the, the planning is so far out for this park right now, that I think if we put our heads together as a group with input from the city administration, that we can put this on the master plan for that park. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I think, I don't mind having it in the park, especially with Ruth's wishes being for veterans. My question would be funding?
Okay, this is my idea. Okay, this is my idea.
Okay, I knew she, I knew she.
There is a way to collect donations to the city, and there's a way to not collect donations to the city. And if people wanted to donate, and Brandon and I will go around and speak with the DAR, the American Legion, and other people, if Brandon and I wanted to ask people for money, they would need to be earmarked to the new McCord Park Gold Star Veterans Memorial, Gold Star slash Veterans Memorial. I would like to ask the city to match the funds up to $5,000. A real Gold Star Memorial designed and started by Woody Williams is $90,000. I do not have the ability or the energy to raise $90,000. And then they have a lot of stipulations with that one. What I'm thinking of is a very small personalized Gold Star and Veterans Memorial for the city of Squim to honor. We've had a lot of people serve in the service in the history of Squim. And in case you didn't know, a Gold Star family is a family that lost somebody in active duty or lost somebody afterwards due to an injury, a disease, or suicide after serving in the military. And that's what I think that it will be nice of us to do that, since the park has not been designed yet also.
All right, so follow up questions? The $5,000 from the city, one, is that legal and doable? I mean, it's probably do, like, is it legal because of the taxpayer, gifting of taxpayer funds thing? And so I'd want to see if that's legal. And then, two, the clarifying, the city as an entity cannot take donations? Is that correct? So there would have to be, what do you call it? Like, an administering entity that is not the city?
Why, the city can take donations if it's earmarked.
Yeah, and Sue is on, and we, we, because we, this came up at the agenda planning, we've had a little discussion, and you're right, you can do it either way, a third party, especially a, you know, a valid 501(c)(3) or any of these. They often accept funds and keep things in escrow and then make one big donation of the aggregate. That just keeps us out of the, you know, the receipts and invoices or whatever. So Sue just texted me and said, it's doable and it's allowable. So the city can take the funds and issue receipts, or we can have like the American Legion or some other group do that, either, either way.
Sorry, what about getting in the budget for matching $5,000? Up to $5,000?
We can, we can give Sue, so Sue said, I think to your question, is it gifting of funds? And she said, no, but we can patch her in if we need to. She, she is, has purposely stayed on.
I guess another follow up question would be, because we don't know when, like, right now, we don't know when exactly it would be built and when the master plan would be for the park. So I guess my question would be, do we earmark that now for the future? Or do we have to wait until it's actually in a master plan?
Thanks. You can earmark it now.
Brandon and I would really like the rest of the council to support this and help us do it. It's, it's exciting, but it's a little bit overwhelming, too, because I want it to be very honorable and peaceful, a place people can go to honor somebody in their family.
Sue's on, but if worst came to worst, we always have rainy day funds, and it's only $5,000, but go ahead, Sue.
I was just going to say, good answer, Brandon. Yeah, and we would account for these donations, however they're collected, in a separate sub-fund, probably a parks' sub-fund. And we would track the expenses against the donations. And it's just kind of basic accounting stuff. Any, any questions for me?
Does this need to go through the Parks Board? I haven't even discussed it with Hannah, because I wanted to discuss it with council first and see if it was doable. But does this, something like this need to go through the Parks Board?
I would think the first step would be, if this wants to go through the budget, we need to let Sue know now, since we're at the beginning of the budget cycle.
Yep, great idea. And then, whatever your ideas are, I think you should speak with Paul, Public Works Director, and, you know, start talking about what's the extent of the, basically kind of the Public Works project.
Yeah, because that stuff, obviously, you know, getting it in the master plan and that stuff is TBD, but budget is coming up quick fast in like two or three meetings from now.
So could, oh, Harmony, yeah.
I'm just thinking out loud here. What if, do we need to put this $5,000 in the budget right now? Because it, the master plan's not even put together. There's, we've all, we're all seeing how long Centennial Park is taking. I'm just, I'm not against it. I'm just wondering if this is way too early in the game to start putting aside $5,000 for a Gold Star Memorial? That's all. Are we trying to, if, ooh, I had a follow up thought. So can we start collecting donations now without saying that we're going to put aside $5,000? I mean, I, I mean, if people are feeling really inspired and passionate about this, let's, you know, not have a, a roadblock for that enthusiasm. But that, that's my thought. Thank you.
I mean, we can come back and say we want to do more, but that's just option A, and that kind of locks us into an amount. Again, like I said, we have our rainy day fund if we choose to go a different route and do something later.
And if we just need some more time to stew on it, we can always do a budget amendment. And $5,000 contribution isn't huge, but if we collect, let's say, $50,000 in donations, and we end up doing a monument that's $55,000, you'd want to put that in your budget for the next year. But I'm, we can cross that, you know, river when we, when we get there. It would just be great to get council's direction that, yeah, we're cool with this idea. We're going to accept donations for a memorial. And we're going to, you know, pencil it out a little bit later. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Sue. And to, to speak to Harmony's question, I think the value of adding something in this year's budget would be a signal that we are wanting this to move forward. We're kind of putting a marker down, knowing that a lot is going to happen and change, but it's our, it's our way of signaling that we want to do it. So I'd be in favor of that.
That's exactly what I was, as we go to different service organizations in the military with connections and say to them, the city is making a commitment to not only donate, and it doesn't have to be a very big piece of the park at all, just a small piece of the park and $5,000 matching funds so far. Hopefully it won't cost too much money, but it's just to make the commitment to it. I'm sorry, what?
I was, sorry, I was going to say, and with how far out the planning could be, you could accumulate some, hopefully, you know, more donations in that amount of time.
Right.
Which would be nice.
Well, and there, some of the other details that both Christina's brought up and Sue, it's almost like the fee in lieu of, you know, after five years, you have to return it. Not that people would want that, but whatever, we probably want to clean up some language on those donations so that the, if it, even if it goes beyond three years or whatever, we either do or, or don't reimburse it.
I would just suggest that if council is out there soliciting donations, I would just suggest that you explain to them that, you know, we're making this donation, you know, we're asking for this donation with the intent, intent that this is not going to be refundable. Because if council wants to entertain refunding donations, that is going to be a separate process. I think Nicole knows exactly what I'm talking about, because I saw her head shaking. So that would be a more cumbersome process for staff than merely accepting donations that are earmarked for a certain project.
Could you send out, at least to me and probably Kathy and any other counselors, a little bullet point on that, talking points on something like that, if we were to?
On the refund component or all of it?
Probably just all of it, if we were to go and talk to different organizations. Yeah, I'd be happy to. Okay.
And nothing like this happens quickly.
Yeah, no.
But I would really like to get it set up and in place so that when the master plan is done, it's, it's there. Thank you.
Okay, if staff is looking for guidance, I will say that I'm supportive of the $5,000 from the city in the budget. And I'm also supportive of the donations part. Yeah.
Thank you.
Because I think that's what Sue said that she needed. So I just want to make sure that that's in the minutes.
Is that a motion?
Aye, aye.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you, fellow counselors. The city, the checkbook for a reason.
Thank you, council, and I appreciate the direction for the 2025 budget. I also appreciate Christina's comments on the complexity of refunds for this stuff.
All right, 11F, mobile home park fees. So I brought this one for, just, you know, to continue to offer, you know, stronger protection for those that are living in our mobile home parks. I think it's evident by those that continue to fill the audience, you know, time after time for these type of actions, that it means a lot to everyone that continues to show up. So I think it's fairly self evidenced by at least the draft ordinance from Bellingham. And the question before council would be, do we want to ask staff to bring back a Squim centered like ordinance? That would, you know, make sense for Squim. So I will open it up to discussions from council on what they like and don't like on this.
I liked it. But how does this relate to, didn't we start an overlay zoning project already? The Development Department?
For sure. They've been working, the Planning Department, Planning Commission has been working on that for almost 18 months. Lindsay just read this, and she's on remotely as well, should you want to ask her about it. But I think she's bringing the Planning Commission's proposal to you in the next meeting or two. So there will, but I don't know if it's going to be exactly what Bellingham's doing. So I haven't compared the two, nor do I think she has. But we could ask her if, what her opinions are. But she's been working very closely, originally with consultants, and then she's taken it on herself with the Planning Commission the last five months.
My understanding is that, that's relevant. I mean, it's related, but this is specific to the junk fee aspect of the experience of the mobile home park folks. So I think we need to make sure we keep them as, keep our, keep our eye on both balls, but don't try and conflate the two issues.
Any other comments on this?
I have a question then. So just asking for clarification on what you're, you're meant asking, or saying, Counselor Butler, would your preference be then for us to move forward? Not preference, are you, sorry, let me back up a second. Don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. For clarity then, move forward on the multi, a mobile home park overlay process? It's already underway? And then take on an ordinance instead of doing it at the same time? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I think we can do both at the same time.
Excuse me, council, just one point of clarity. While you can work on them at the same time, the single subject rule would prohibit us from intermingling too many things. And so while I would admit, I will admit, I've not looked at what the Bellingham ordinance says. There may be a way to incorporate it into this ordinance that we've been working on, but there may not be either. And you would need to be aware of that as well, that it would need to go through its own separate process. You could still continue working on your overlay, and you could also direct staff to work on the, the Bellingham fine, but they would need to run parallel, not simultaneous, if that makes sense. Not, not, not into one.
So not taking parts of the, not taking, so not adding components from this Bellingham ordinance into what we're already doing?
Correct.
Yes, so. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. I look forward to seeing how this all moves forward.
I am very supportive of this, and I think it helps protect our citizens.
In the early wherethes of the City of Bellingham document, it references, I mean, they're, they're addressing this because of wanting to preserve affordable housing. But they also reference that consumers are getting hit with excessive and unfair fees, both in manufactured home parks as well as rental housing. And then this one is written specifically for manufactured home parks. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't just, would we want to expand this to be rental housing as well?
I think we can. I see no reason why we can't.
I like what you're saying. Thank you for bringing that up.
Do we need a motion?
I was just going to say, is there a motion on the floor?
I move to direct staff to. I don't have, to me, I'd almost want to keep it separate, because too much, to me, it muddies up an overlay. That's just me. So I would direct staff to bring back to council a, I hate using junk fee, an appropriately worded ordinance addressing excessive fees for affordable housing, modeled off of the Bellingham code. If you're understanding me.
I, I am, but two questions. One, does council want to expand this to rental housing? And secondly, what is council's definition of affordable housing? Because that's, huh?
We, we have a definition, didn't we?
Workforce or affordable or full?
Well, and I'm going to look to the city manager, because he helped with some of those definitions on what those were.
And I was looking for Tim, where did he go? Yeah, yeah. We, we can readdress those definitions, but if it's council's idea that you'd like it to be extended to the rental market or to that subpopulation, we can certainly. Either 100, yeah, we, you know, that, again, it's, it depends who's definition you're talking about. And so we'd want to clarify that, but we can do that. You just pick a percent of AMI, yes.
We defined affordable housing and low income housing in our work, our, our housing work session. So that's the definitions we should be using.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I just ask that, do we need to keep this limited to affordable housing? Because if they're excessive and junk fees, they apply to any rental situation, any manufactured development. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be limited to, I mean, reading the kinds of fees they were talking about in here. I don't, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be limited to, I mean, reading the kinds of fees they were talking about in here.
Do we have to?
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we, I would like to move that staff develop a, um, new chapter in the code prohibiting unfair, excessive manufactured mobile home community fees and rental fees.
I second that. So I move and seconded, any further discussion?
So that's a blanket rentals. Okay. Was there any other clarification you needed, Christina? Was that, was that good?
I honestly was looking for this ordinance, I was not a signer on this, so I have looked at it, but, um, what I will say is that I think with the discussion with council, I think initially, um, that gives us enough direction, and I am sure that we will be bringing touchpoints along the way to, to make sure that we are on the right track with council, so, thanks.
I guess my question of clarification would be the motion is without intent of bringing this back at a certain timeframe, so do you, would you want a specific date, or would you rather give staff enough time to be able to bring it back when they can research everything they need to research and bring back something that can work?
I have, I have faith in that they'll bring it back when they have a, a workable product, product.
Okay.
I, I don't, they don't, you know, I don't, they don't drag, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just make sure that, you know, get rid of number two and allow personal checks.
We'll keep you updated in that city manager report.
Anything else, looks like, uh, anybody opposed? I hope we took it about yet. All right, seeing none, that motion passes. All right, where we at? Uh, work studies sessions discussion, uh, same manager, this one was you?
Yeah, I think I can get this started, and, uh, I'll lean on Heather, who's got a better memory. So we started this conversation in the agenda planning meeting, uh, and really, uh, it started even before then, when staff brought back to council a way to operationalize your, uh, priorities for the year, you remember that document, of course? And both on the staff's column of action items and on the council's action items around your priorities, the word work sessions was used a lot, and so, um, and we agreed to that document, so I guess council or staff is now interested in, or was interested in, so we brought it to the agenda plan. What does that mean, what is, what's a workable model, how do you all want to work around work sessions? Meaning, do you want to, a, a staff council meeting, uh, on the second and fourth, and on the first and third, then you have work sessions? The whole idea of a work session is where, uh, you can have, um, you know, dialogue back and forth, and it's, and it's not, um, an actionable meeting, but just where a lot of information sharing can be done, so that when you get to your official council meeting, you've got all the background you need to be comfortable moving forward. Anyway, we brought this to the deputy and, and, or the mayor and deputy mayor, um, last week, and I think the, the conversation ended up, let's try to, if you had a work session on the, on the other Mondays, you could, uh, address several topics, two or three topics, and have in-depth conversation about that. But that would mean a lot of your schedules would be, we're now talking about more Mondays, and so I think the council we received was, let's keep it to single topics, and let's try to do it before this, your normally scheduled meeting. And if we thought that the topic needed more than 45 minutes, which is about all you have before you start, then we might need to go or want to go, uh, a little earlier than that. So rather than an additional meeting, uh, let's, let's think about putting a schedule together uh, around information that you all are interested in receiving from the staff, or were interested in sharing with you, that would, is just deeper than what you would, you would want to hear in a normal council meeting, so that it's just a conversation and sharing. So, um, I think as we bounced that around in agenda and planning meeting, the idea was, well, why don't you, why don't we see what the other council members feel about that, so that's, um, that's kind of the summary or the context. Was that right, Heather and Mayor? I think that's what we got to.
Yeah, Brandon, I did not feel comfortable making that decision for everybody, so we wanted to ask how everybody feels about it. Um, personally, I would much rather prefer just keeping work sessions to right before regular council meetings. I would go to first and third Monday meetings, but I wouldn't like it, so just for the record.
Doesn't the Planning Commission meet on the Mondays that we don't?
No, they're Tuesday, they're on a Tuesday.
Oh, okay, well, I, I like the idea, first of all, I find the work sessions invaluable. Like when we did the two on the housing, it wasn't easy, but we got an awfully lot done, and, and something eventually came out of it. Because we're kind of all starting in the same starting point on some of these subjects, and I think it's necessary that we add a little time, not necessarily during a council meeting, but I find them very invaluable, and I think it'd be easier to have them before the meeting, but my schedule's a lot more flexible than the people that have other jobs besides council.
My two cents would be that meeting before the regular meeting does work, but this, this would just be an as-needed thing if there was a topic that warranted a work session.
I agree too, but Harmony, it, do you have Arts Commission and Parks and stuff?
Yeah, so, um, I would definitely, thank you, um, that definitely would be, I would like to request that it gets scheduled around that, so that I'm not having to pick between a work session or going to the PARB or this, um, Arts Commission, and then, um, uh, hmm. I guess be, before, um, our regular scheduled meetings make sense, it just really makes it really long. But, um, hmm, yeah, um, there, so lots of bio breaks, I really could use a bio, I could have used a bio break in the middle of this one, but, um, long, long and short of it is, um, yes, thank you for bringing up the Arts Commission and the PARB, and yeah, more bio breaks would make it better.
Sorry, just in agreement that, just maintain a status for now? Okay.
All right, and, and there is, uh, we, we can look ahead when, and see some times that, uh, you know, so we'll probably put together a schedule that can be approved, or you all can have some input on, but that we'll, we'll draft together and bounce that off you, thank you.
I'm just wondering, before we move on, if we can address the public comment about South Seventh Avenue, is Paul online, or? Nope.
So Nick, Nick was here and had talked to some family members out there and continues to manage that project, do you see Nick or Paul on?
Neither one of them are online.
Okay. They, they are, continue to stay involved, and as recently as this afternoon, um, so I wouldn't want to speak for him, I, I, they came in my office and said that you might have some comments on this, however, we're very close to it, we know what, what's going on, and we're, we'll be there and ready to address it, and now they're not, because it's, it went past it, so, um, I don't know how best to answer that, whatever your specific question is, we can get back to you on email, or?
Well, first of all, it's October, right? Was the road supposed to be done by, in October?
Yeah, this, this is, I, I'm not near, close enough to, to be able to answer those things, that.
That's my memory, and it, it's not usually that wrong, um, right?
Can you have them?
Yeah.
Can you have them give us an update on that timeline?
Can we get contact information from?
Derek.
Okay, Mr. Huntington, and then, yeah, I, we need to follow up, and, and I mean, it's already been three months, and for the residents who aren't getting a new home, this is a huge inconvenience.
Right.
And, um, I think we need to at least make sure they're safe, I mean, I remember the guy that, that lives on Daisy Lane that bicycles and has all that cred to bicycle through. So I think we need to make sure that we're taking care of all of our citizens, not just the ones who aren't even living in houses yet.
Agreed, yeah, so, so should I prepare an, an email response to the, all the council members, or have Nick or Paul do that for you, would that be helpful? And then you can respond.
Be helpful, it'd be helpful to have an action plan and not just a response.
Okay.
Um, also, I just wanted to request, um, uh, the gentleman making public comment mentioned that there was a video, is that, um, something that could be shared with council, or, um?
Send it to the city clerk, Mr. Huntington. And the state clerk can get it to everybody.
Great, thanks.
I would just add, sorry, Kathy, but I just want to add, um, I don't know how large the video is, but we are limited in our capacity. A minute, okay, that should be fine, thanks.
I, I drove down there the first time we had citizens come, and it, it was, just happened to be a day where they weren't working, so the barriers were moved. But I'm just wondering if, and the one gentleman who talked to us about his bicycling, I'm wondering if people realize that they are walking or biking through a work zone, and they just are used to taking that street instead of going around.
The gentleman on the bike lives on Daisy Lane, which is right in the middle, you can't, you.
Hey, that was my question.
You can't go out of there without going in the work zone, I know, we looked at it today, and there was big trucks, I think it said, it was closed on one side, but there was no blockade on the other side, so I think we need to make sure that the signage is good. Um, and there was, and the trucks were taking, like, driving down the middle of the road, so a car couldn't have passed anyways.
Thank you.
And at some point, I think, when it's all done, that, I think there needs to be continued look at speed mitigation, because there's been an issue there prior to construction of that, particularly at that, that turn. So I don't know if, it, yeah, I, I think it goes beyond increased, you know, police patrols, there, I think more mitigation of some sort needs to happen there, whatever that is, you know.
Thank you, I'll, I'll make a note of that as well, and see if, uh, our traffic engineers can, or police departments can work jointly on that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, anybody like to attend the next meeting on October 22nd? All right, Vicky says she'll do it. All right, next meeting will be the 28th of October at 4:30, there'll be a closed session. Looks like that 4:30 and 5 o'clock, followed by regular meeting at 6.
I'll send a note to Heather just to formalize it, but I'll be out of town, out of the country that week, so, we'll not be available that week. Sadly, I'll miss the opening of the park as well, so I'm sorry about that.
The City of Squim is a partner in the reservoir, the Dungeness area reservoir. They're having another meeting open to the public on, um, the 22nd at 6:00 PM. I went to the, you and I went to the first one. Quite a, quite a few people there, so there'll be more people there at this one also, in case a citizen asks you about it. Thanks.
Is that time of the hour?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I like it.